Welcome. I'd like to call the order. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, four P M., Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine Bank Street, Southeast, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McClusser, would you call and roll, please?
Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, um, I've got an item. I make a motion to add an economic development closed session to the agenda as item thirteen B. Is this, this is when you want it now? Is that correct? Yes, ma'am. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. One, legal authority, Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A five. Subject matter, unannounced, prospective businesses, industries. Purpose, general economic development project. Update, discussion on the same. And that is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Got a second? Mr. Tucker? Thank you. Any discussion on a motion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Scares, has yours been pulled up yet? Okay, can I get your vote? Thank you.
We good?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Moving to item four. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right, you got a motion? You got a second? I'll second. All right, second is Chester. All right, any discussion on a motion? If not, gentlemen, we're ready to vote.
Who made that motion? I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Ingram? Second by Mr. Chester. I'm sorry. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions, committee meetings are now being recorded, live streamed, and can be viewed at the same YouTube, Facebook location as the Board of Supervisors business meetings. Please remember that the board work session is designed for internal board and county staff communications, discussions, and work. It is not a question and answering session with this audience. Accordingly, with the work session, no questions or comments for the audience, from the audience will be entertained. Respectful, any outburst or disorder conduct from the audience will be, will not be tolerated and may result in offending person, removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other approaching appropriate parties are designated by the board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearings of the citizens of the night's business meetings. Uh, item five, presentations, Offseason Informal Presentation, informational presentation, uh, Ms. White. Welcome. How you doing tonight?
Very well. Thank you, Chairman Dalton. It is truly a pleasure to be here with everyone this evening, especially since you all represent each and every place that my sports director, business partner, and I have tried to be get, have tried to be, um, get to. But we have you right here in front of us, and we are truly pleasured, um, and honored to be able to present to you tonight. Chairman Dalton, Vice Chair Dudley, Mr. Warren, Mr. Scares, Mr. Ingram, Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Chestner. Good evening. My name is Delilah White, and I serve as the Executive Director of Offseason, a newly established nonprofit organization here in Pennsylvania County. I am here to introduce Offseason to you all, to tell you more about the purpose, mission, programs and services, and the many benefits that Offseason will provide for our county and our city. I will end. I will end with sharing our strategic priorities, and it would be remiss of me if I did not take the opportunity to request strategic partnerships from the Board of Supervisors here in Pennsylvania County to build a sports complex to serve our children, our athletes, and also our community members. Joe Mantaply, the Edmonds Brothers, Kenny Lewis, Coach Robert Prunty, Vic Hall, Tony Womack, Wendell Scott. These are all local heroes from Danville and Pennsylvania County, major league athletes and coaches that were homegrown right here in our area and had the proper selfless support, care, advocacy, resources to achieve their sports dreams. We realize that many of the young men, including the ones I've just named here, like, have access to this type of support. However, for our female athletes, there is none. This reality became the motto for Offseason, "There is none." A newly formed nonprofit organization designed to elevate the skills, performance, and outcomes of female athletes in Pennsylvania County and Danville, Virginia. Registered as a five oh one C three public charity, Offseason is about empowering female athletes through holistic sports development, training, and education. Our mission is to develop the best female athletes in Virginia. What does it mean to be the best? We've talked with many college coaches, and our sports director, Rachel Hunt, is a former college volleyball coach. We've asked them directly, what are you looking for in athletes that you would like to recruit and play for your university team? The tried and true answer from each and every one of them are these three things: athleticism, academics, and character. With this understanding and firsthand experience, our mission is to develop female athletes who are physically, mentally, and spiritually ready for competition and life. To accomplish this mission, Offseason will provide holistic athletic, academic, and personal development programs for female athletes ages eight to twenty-one years old, all the way through college sophomore, specifically during their off-season from their school sports programs. Offseason will offer basketball, soccer, and track sports programs, such as clinics and camps, and have plans to include volleyball and women's football, believe it or not, as we continue to grow. Offseason's sports services also includes customized college scouting and recruiting and individualized sports development and training packages. College coaches are also serious about the student part of student athlete. Many of our young athletes understand the importance of grades, but may not know how to stay on top of all of the academic demands. Offseason's academic programs are designed to provide additional academic support, coaching, and mentoring for student athletes. Our programs include S O L. and course test preparation, tutoring, college and career planning and preparation, and internships. We focus on ensuring that student athletes are confident in their abilities and are equipped and motivated to maintain a high grade point average throughout their academic careers. By providing personal development programs focused on healthy human development, such as socio-emotional, spiritual, financial skills, life coaching, self-support, and advocacy, Offseason is intentional about the character development piece of our training and development. The goal of our holistic programs and services is to provide a clear path for student athletes to achieve their dreams. Our programs and services will be facilitated by experienced, compassionate, and selfless educators, program managers, and sports trainers. As a native of Pennsylvania County and a former student athlete at Chatham High School, we could not think of a better place to build the Offseason Indoor Sports Complex than right here in Pennsylvania County, bringing numerous benefits to our home region. Our plan is to build a sports complex on Route twenty-nine north, making it easily accessible to all families and students and community members throughout the county and city. The indoor sports complex will have basketball courts, track and soccer fields, weight rooms, specialized training rooms, classrooms, and office space. Offseason plans to host local, regional, and national athletic events at the sports complex, attracting community members and visitors alike. The sports complex will be open to children, community members, and organizations for use during our non-program hours as well. To provide additional needed services to residents and visitors of Pennsylvania County, the complex will also include two strategic trade businesses. The first is a daycare center specializing in early education for special needs children ages zero to three years old. Many parents of special needs children throughout the county have voiced their struggles to us with finding a place that can care for their youngest ages zero to three with special needs and provide educational services. Our Education Director for Offseason and also our Sports Director are both SPED certified teachers and have extensive experience educating special needs children. Our hearts are completely open to meeting the needs of our parents for our youngest special needs children ages zero to three with providing a daycare as a part of the sports complex. Along with special needs children and providing services for them ages zero to three, we also hope that the childcare center will provide regular services for children ages zero to twelve, and then also childcare and daycare services for special needs children ages zero to twelve as well, making it a holistic childcare center for community members, parents, and those with special needs children. Our focus through our educational programs with our daycare is definitely on that early education, early academics, and sports engagement. We have also come to realize through many conversations with, with parents that their special needs children are getting great educational services, but they do not have access to sports and recreation. And we once again have an open heart to be able to provide sports services for these children. For example, we would love to see them and love for us to be able to create a special Olympics team and have them compete. I encourage you, if you haven't seen the movie Champion that's out in theaters right now, to please go see that as an example of the vision that we have for the sports part with our special needs children. The second strategic business that will be, um, as a part of the sports complex is a deli and bakery, simply to have an onsite food and dining experience for visitors of the complex, for users of the complex, and for family and community members who need somewhere to eat, maybe as they're dropping off their children or picking up their athlete from one of our programs. Now, we do consider these to be two strategic trade businesses because our plan is to have these businesses, a portion of their profit absolutely support Offseason as a nonprofit organization. We are truly trying to find diversified ways to support the nonprofit so that we can be able to get up and going, build a facility, and also have sustainability once we are up and going. Now that we understand the multitude of benefits that Offseason as a nonprofit organization will provide for athletes, parents, community members, children, and visitors, let's look at some economic development benefits to the county. We are extremely blessed that through a network of good people, we were led to Mr. Andy Berger, who recently purchased thirty acres of land located at one eight nine five seven U S. Highway twenty-nine in Chatham, Virginia. After sharing the mission, vision, and purpose of Offseason, Andy became an immediate supporter, particularly excited about the daycare portion um, for childcare services in the community, and as a former athlete, absolutely excited to be able to have a space for female athletes to train, develop, and grow as well. As an immediate supporter, he did reserve ten acres of M-one zoned land for Offseason purchase. Now, we did, of course, follow up and ask him if he would kindly donate that land as a nonprofit organization. He gently smiled and said, "Absolutely not," but did offer us a really competitive price for the ten acres in a prime location, road front property that is just enough for what we need to build the facility. So we do understand that business is business, and we are working vigorously to get this money together to pay Mr. Berger so that we can purchase the ten acres of land to start building the facility. The capital investment in real estate property for the land itself and the building of the Offseason Sports Complex in Pennsylvania County is currently estimating more than five million dollars. We do need to, we do need to complete our feasibility study for accurate numbers, including getting our architects and engineers with their accurate drawing, design plans, and numbers. Right now, as I stated, it is currently estimating the capital investment in real estate property in the land at five plus million. In addition, it is estimated that we will need seventy-plus full and part-time career positions to fully operate the entire complex with an average salary of around fifty-five thousand dollars for career positions. We hope that we are positioning Offseason to be a strategic nonprofit partner for advancing economic development, sports and recreation, and quality of life goals for Pennsylvania County. But with each opportunity, there must be unity. Offseason mission requires us to take the mantle of building a needed sports, a needed sports complex to serve female athletes in Pennsylvania County. Because we are a newly established nonprofit, we are working diligently to secure both human and financial capital resources to build the complex, purchase the land, get up and running, and start providing our programs and services. Looking at our strategic priorities, we are planning for the sow the seed capital campaign to kick off this summer. The goal of this capital campaign is to secure the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars needed to purchase the land initially. We believe that Offseason, as a nonprofit organization, through our resources and networks, will be able to raise at minimum fifty thousand dollars during this campaign. However, we do need additional strategic financial partnerships to achieve our goal for this inaugural campaign for the land purchase and then also for our following capital campaigns to actually build the land. Therefore, as I come to a close, I would like to humbly request the Board of Supervisors to please consider Offseason in setting aside an initial one hundred thousand dollars to help us purchase the land over the coming year. I would also like to request to the board here today to please consider any economic development incentives and partnerships that you may be able to make with Offseason as a nonprofit organization to bring a sports complex to Pennsylvania County. In closing, we are also requesting your hands, your heart, your mind, and your leadership to please stay in continuous conversations with us as we move forward over the coming months to really solidify mutually beneficial partnership opportunities. Thank you for your time this evening, and I will be delighted to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have a question for Ms. White? No, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, and thank you, Board of Super Supervisors.
All right, moving to item five B. Introduction of the Gretna Library, Ms. Griffin. Welcome. How you doing?
Welcome. I'm Rhonda Griffin. I am the library director. I took Lisa Toots' place after she retired. I've been here about six months, and as you know, Lisa did an amazing job at trying to find funding for the Gretna Library for the renovation. In nineteen, in two thousand nineteen, the library in Gretna opened in conjunction with the D C C. Facilities where they had classes in half of the building and the library occupied the other half. Um, in two thousand sixteen, D C C pulled out, leaving that portion of the building empty. So now we are on the path of renovating the entire building and making, making the entire building library, a library facility. So as of now, the library works out of half of the building, and all of the, all of the books that you see, all of the stacks are crammed into one portion, the right side of the building. So the library currently is on that side, and D C C owned this side circled in blue. Once D C C left, that whole part was vacant. When it was bid out, it was done in phases, so we had phases one through six. They, they started working on the side of the building that D C C once occupied because it was empty. We have now completed that side, so the project's about halfway done. They did, they tore down walls, they built walls, they put in electrical, um, added a meeting room, and that side will turn into the adult shelves and computers for patrons who come in. A lot of patrons come in looking for jobs on the computers or resumes. So computers and stacks will be on that side along with the large meeting room. Now, the staff is working on the side and remaining open most of the time, either curb side or letting people come in to the existing building during the construction. They have done an amazing job. So that side is complete. The stacks are in place, so we have completed phase one, phase two. Phase three and five were completed together, so that is the entire left side of the building. We now need to start working on phase four. Moving all of this stuff, so I just have to give a shout out to the library staff. Maintenance has helped, but the, but the library staff that's there, they are, they have been really working hard to, um, I'm sorry. They've been really working hard to move the books from the one, the one side to the, to the, from the right side to the left. Maintenance, and there's the staff that's there. There they go. So the, we also worked on the outside of the building. The funds that the Board of Supervisors provided allowed us to leverage private funds and donations from numerous different sources in the county, and we were able to expand the outside. There's, there's a large, um, property that we were able to put a stage. We're working on the stage now, a music maze, an outdoor reading area, and an area with picnic tables um, where you can plug up your laptops and do study even when the library's closed. So the outside of the building, this is the reading area, and this was primarily funded through Dama Regional Foundation, J T. Minimod, Hughes Foundation, community foundations, some private donations, and, um, Fitzgerald. So there's the list. Womack Foundation, Centura gave some. There was a lot of private donations. So just so you know, that is the portion that is being completed as we speak. We're hoping it should, it will be completed by the summer. Right now, with the staff moving everything from one side to the other, the library is closed. Everything's in boxes, so the grand open and the ribbon cutting is when we will open back up. We were hoping to be o- open for the public during this last phase, but it's just- With the money that you provided, we will be able to provide expanded library services, early literacy programs for children, STEM programs, after-school program, and the library's in a perfect location, right between the high school and the middle school, to provide after-school programs. They will have their own teen space in the renovated area. There's a meeting room for tutoring, so we just wanted to say thank you for everything you're doing and give you an update. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Griffin? No, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Moving to item six A, we got a budget update. Ms. Vanderheide. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I just have a very brief update. We're getting ready to head into budget presentation and that kind of thing coming up, so I don't have a lot to share this afternoon, but I did want to let you know that currently there's still not a state budget, probably will not be a state budget until June. That is what we're hearing right now. As I had mentioned at the March Finance Committee meeting, the passing of the state budget would have little to no impact on our county's budget. So, at the time of the meeting back in March, I had mentioned that Governor Youngkin was scheduled to amend, approve, or veto the General Assembly's skinny budget on March the twenty-seventh. So, on that day, he sent that particular bill back to lawmakers, but basically his comment was, "It was only for technical reasons," but for the general purpose of the skinny budget, he approved that part of it. So, just so you all know, I did check with the school system. They did receive state budget information on April the seventh, Friday, April seventh, and they were out for spring break last week. So, they're in the process of reviewing all of that financial data right now to see what is actually included in that, but it is based on that skinny budget. So, with this information, it makes the most sense for us to go ahead and move forward with the approval of our budget in order to be prepared for the beginning of the new fiscal year. If, for some reason, changes are needed based on the state budget's approval, amendments could easily be made after the beginning of the new year. So, you should have received a new budget schedule in your Friday update, and it is also included in your packet this afternoon, and I just wanted to go over those dates in closing. So, on April the twenty-sixth, which is next Wednesday afternoon at four P.M., I'll be making a presentation of the FY twenty-four proposed budget and would be requesting for you all to approve that the budget be advertised. The advertisement will go in the Star Tribune on May the third, and that way we would meet our legal requirements for having a public hearing at your next regularly scheduled meeting on May the sixteenth, and that would just be held at seven P.M. And we do hold two separate public hearings, one for our school budget, followed straight away with our full county budget afterwards. And then you all have to wait seven days before you can approve that budget, so we would call you back on May the twenty-third at four P.M. to approve the full county and school budget at that time. So, you do have quite a bit of time to review those documents, to have special meetings other than these if you would like, but you all should be receiving that information. I'm hoping to get that out this coming Friday so that you can review that, those numbers if you would like, but it will be presented on Wednesday the twenty-sixth. Any questions or comments?
Kim, I did have a comment and a couple of questions.
Okay.
I know every year you work very hard on this budget, and I'm very grateful for that. So, you've met with the Finance Committee?
Yes.
How, how many times?
We met four, five times.
Half a dozen.
At least, half a dozen.
Half a dozen. Who, who was present?
In those early meetings, it was Mr. Warren and Mr. Tucker.
Any of these?
And then they met, they transferred the information from those meetings to those meetings.
Any of these meetings advertised? Okay. Again, thank you for what you do.
Okay.
Any more questions? Ms. Vanderheide? No? Thank you. Appreciate that, Kim. All right, item six B, Ms. Boswell. The CSA CPM Audit Review. Welcome, Ms. Boswell.
Thank you for having me tonight, this afternoon. So, I'm here today to, for anyone that doesn't know, I am Cheryl Boswell. I am the CSA Coordinator for the county. I am here to present our two thousand and twenty audit report that we finally got in I'll start talking, but once it's up there, and you guys, I'm sure, have the report in your, in your packet as well. So, the state partially concurs with their findings from our self-audit. So, our self-audit was actually completed in February of two thousand and twenty and turned into the state, and that was right when COVID hit. So, we should have been audited in probably May or June of that year, but due to COVID, they completely canceled our audit, and then in January of this year, they come up and said, "We're going back and we're going to complete that audit at this time." So, that's why we are just getting our final report from our two thousand and twenty audit. So, this is a letter from the state saying that they partially concur with our, with our findings on our self-assessment. So, just so you know, our self-assessment is about a ninety-page audit review that I fill out and then complete with CPMT, which is my board, and we go over, and then I turn into the state.
Ms. Boswell, can I interrupt you just for a sec?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm unable to pull this up on my iPad, so I obviously can't see the letter or any of the material being presented.
Did you hit the first one?
I hit them all.
I did, but then I had to hit it. Why is that one? It's gone. Is that?
He should be able to just hit on PDF and look at it. Sorry.
Mine won't come up either, Kim. I can't get the thing.
Mr. Perkins was the same way, but I got his. All right. It's coming. There you go. I don't know what.
We need to work it out before the next meeting.
Hit that PDF.
Did you pull yours up?
Yes.
Can you get yours?
No, look on me. It acts like it was open, that's all it did.
It's just gonna take, I think it just takes a minute to down.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Just got to down. Okay. All right. Thank you. It was slow.
Shouldn't it come up?
It might take a minute.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, they just.
You demand it. Appreciate it. Just doing your job.
Loading it up. Joe, what's come up, Boswell?
I can see the one page. You can't see anything after the, the first page.
I haven't got anything either.
Okay.
I don't know if he's trying to.
I'm good. I'll, I'll switch.
Do you all want me to continue or?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So, on the letter, they say that they partially concur, but in that, they, they also state that they find no significant observations of noncompliance or internal control weaknesses were found. They do list out in the document some different not, minor noncompliances for us to work on fixing. I can go through those and kind of explain what those are and how we're correcting those for the future. I don't know if you guys, it makes it smaller when it puts it up on the TV, so it's hard to see, but I will do my best to answer any questions or tell y'all anything that it says if you have questions. Maybe next time I'll see this in a different way, but this is the report itself that the state sends out to me. So, our first point of noncompliance is just that basically children that are in foster care, they are, could also be eligible for, for federal funding, which is called 4E funding, but that's not determined. They have one hundred and twenty days from the time that a child comes into care to determine if that child is eligible for that federal funding, and it's determined based on income of the parents and some other factors. And so, to begin with, CSA takes full responsibility for payment of that, and then DSS is responsible for reimbursing CSA if at any time that child becomes eligible for those federal fundings. So, basically, what has occurred is that we had some different issues where we were not reimbursed by DSS. In a normal audit situation, we would have been able to be reimbursed because 4E guidelines state that we have up to eight quarters, which would be two years, to be reimbursed for any funding, which normally your audit is done right after your, your audit year ends. They would come in and audit, but because of COVID, they did not do so. So, by the time they audited us and found these grievances, I was not able to go back to DSS to request any repayment of that. But since then, I'm working with DSS. We are working on, we have already come up with a whole plan and have inputted it to have ways to make sure that we are getting those reimbursements, that all of that is running smoothly, and things are going much, much better. I don't see us having any problems with it in the future. Some of the other were use of case support when it wasn't needed. Some of these things are just things that we didn't, small variances that we didn't know that were occurring, truthfully. Same thing with the, the third one is the TFC Case Management, which is Treatment Foster Care. So, there's different guidelines with Medicaid about what Medicaid will pay and what CSA needs to pay. It gets very detailed and complicated, so there were some instances where Medicaid should have paid, but we didn't know that. And at the time, I have worked on, with my office coordinator, we are working on getting some controls set up to make sure that we're either getting denials in cases that Medicaid is not paying to ensure that we are only paying when we should be paying and not paying something that Medicaid should be taking care of. Same thing on the next page for the noncompliance. This goes back to the 4E. These are all 4E reimbursements that we should have received from DSS, but I can no longer ask for repayment for, but as I said, we have already corrected that. So, DSS receives a quality assurance and accountability report, and they call it a QAA. I did not know that those reports even existed until I had this audit, but now I have been working with Ms., Ms. Regina, the Director at DSS. We already, she gives me those reports quarterly. I can review those. It helps us make sure that we are doing all of our reimbursements appropriately. So, like I said, we have, we have things in place now that are making sure that we are running all this smoothly, and at this time, like, if we were to be audited, I could confidently say that we have no instances where they could come back and say that we are not receiving our reimbursements from DSS as they, as we should be. And our last, our last table that they show is where we had some instances where things were basically just coded wrong in our data system, and so that goes on to our, what they call our Leaders Report, which is what goes to the state. Kim and I have been working with this. We have come up with some controls to ensure that in the future that we do not have any issues and that we are reviewing everything. So, we are now doing a quarterly review at, at our board meetings at CPMT to ensure that CPMT and CSA are on the same page with the county finance and that all of our numbers are meshing. So far, so good. We just did our first one and presented it to the Board last month, and we had no issues. So, we'll begin doing that quarterly, which will show that we are looking at our reconciliations and making sure that all of our numbers match. We'll also start using the county audit report, which we weren't doing in the future, and we also will report that to CPMT if there are any findings for CSA or DSS that relate to CSA for those as well. And lastly, on the signature page, which I just got back at the middle of March, it does still have Mr. Smitherman listed. I'm going to reach back out to the state and have that corrected because he was not here at the time we got the final report, and I'll have that changed to Mr. Hunt because he was here and acting as administrator during that time. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Boswell? Ms. Engel?
Cheryl, you do realize on page five, the carbon copy to David Smitherman?
Yeah, so it originally, when we started the audit, so the audit started in two thousand and twenty, and we did, and I initially turned everything in then, and then they came, they canceled our audit, and then they came back in the beginning of this year, I think in December, starting out, going back over it. I mean, I did let them know that he was no longer with us, and honestly, I didn't even catch it until today, but I will, I'm going to reach back out, out to them to have them send up another final report that has it listed correctly.
I, I think you said that at the end of your presentation, didn't you, that you, you already pointed that out to us and that you were going to have Mr. Hunt inserted since he was interim?
Correct.
Thought I heard you say that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't. Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Boswell.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, moving on to item six C, Sycamore Creek Fish Stocking Discussion. Mr. Price?
Got a towel. Great day in the morning.
Welcome, sir. How you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Dudley, as well, and Board of Supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you on the possibilities of stocking some trout at Wayside Park. Give you a little history on this. A couple of years ago, I think I was still maybe interim at the time before I got to promotion, Mr. Dudley came to me about the thoughts of some of his constituents, very interested in some trout stocking at Wayside Park in the creek. And here recently, as Mr. Dalton came on, the Chairman Dalton came on the Board, has endorsed this as well. During that timeframe, Parks and Recreation, our priorities were, we're coming out of the pandemic to get all of our programs back up and running that were originally going from the pandemic, and that, that was not on that list at the time under current supervision. So, now here we are, and we're back up and running. And so, we have an opportunity here, and I've done a bunch of research to figure out how we can make this a possibility. Currently, we do not, we do not sponsor any fishing-type things in the county as far as Parks and Recreation goes.
Right. Yes, sir.
One thing I do want to say is the county, only, only park that the county has that we have water access to is Wayside Park. So, with that being said, there is going to be some temporary backup problems with the bridge construction, but that's a great thing because we are finally here on May twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three, this coming year, the bridge will begin construction, and it will be complete by October twentieth of this year, per the notice to proceed. So, that's a great thing. As all of you know, that park has been fully renovated. You guys are very supportive of it, and that's the last piece of that park, so that's a great segue into this possible youth fishing event as well, is that this bridge will be done, and we can also celebrate, because I really don't know that we have celebrated that park opening because when a lot of it was going on, the pandemic was happening.
That's right.
So, I think it would be a great opportunity for us to, to look at this. So, just a few facts that I've found. There's not a whole lot of trout that are native to Pennsylvania County, but there is some trout that is here in Pennsylvania, I mean, not Pennsylvania County, but in Virginia, which is brook trout. So, you're looking at that map, all the brook trout are west and north for us, so those are currently where they're at. But after doing some research and talking with Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources, they do have programs for this, and I've reached out to our representative in Forest, Mr. Palmer, and we've had some good conversations. So, some issues that we will have with DWR are the following. With their, they have requirements that you must meet to stock trout. One of those being, you have to have one mile of public access. In our park, looking on GIS, we only have about half a mile, and per that, if you say that was the only requirement, we So, um, I think it'd be a great opportunity, uh, for us to, to look at this. So just a few facts that I've found, um, there's not a whole lot of trout that are native to Pennsylvania County, but there is some trout that is, um, here in Pennsylvania, I mean, not Pennsylvania County, but in Virginia, which is brook trout. So you're looking at that map, all the brook trout are west and north for us. So those are currently where they're at. But after doing some research and talking with, uh, Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources, um, they do have programs for this and I've reached out to our representative in forest, Mr. Palmer, and we've had some good conversations. So some issues that we will have with DWR are the following, um, with their, they have requirements that you must meet to stock trout. Um, one of those being you have to have one mile of public access. In our park, looking on GIS, we only have, uh, about half a mile. And per that, if you say that was the only requirement we didn't meet, you would have to go and get landowner's permission to get that one mile access. Their landowner permission would have to be throughout the year that it was stocked, that the public can come on your property and fish and it has to be open to them. So that can have its set of challenges there. But another one is they usually stock trout in their waters, starting in October, and they want you to be able to stock up until June 30th. Our water temperatures would not allow for trout to be stocked up to June 30th.
That's right.
Um, it needs to be about 67 and under for the water to, uh, them not to be stressed out and that'll make them move or, you know, could have complications. So, um, those are just some of the things. And then one, I didn't, I've, I've learned a lot on this journey about fish that I didn't know, but there is an endangered species, uh, the roanoke long perch in the Stanton River that they would have to, if they came down and say we, we, they decided they wanted to make this work for us, they would have to do an ecological type test or study of what the impacts of trout in that creek could do to that, that endangered species.
Yes, sir.
And then just a couple of other small things before I get into, to the good part. Um, the analysis of some things that I've found too, is that they generally stock west of 29 towards the Blue Ridge with their trout, and that's where they generally try to keep it. And I'll, um, elaborate a little more here in a second, but after conversations too, their production of trout is at capacity, um, to their stocked waters that they're currently doing. And that, they've been told they're not going to take any more new waters. And I was hopeful of a, a youth possible program, but I got an email today that said they're still not taking on new waters. But with that, um, we don't have to go through DWR. We can, uh, do this together as a Parks and Recreation sponsored event, a county sponsored event, um, going through private hatcheries. So there are private, a couple of private hatcheries throughout the state that have trout. Um, the only thing that we would have to do with the Department of Wildlife Resources was fill out a Virginia, uh, fish stocking authorization form, which is just what type of fish, where you're getting them from, what day you're doing it, how many you're, how many you're getting. And that way they can check and make sure that it's not diseased fish or there going to be any issues as far as any diseases that these fish may have that may cause problems down the road. Um, so for my recommendations, um, I'm going to go back, um, there would be a cost to it. It's not substantial and it's something that I think, you know, we can, we can definitely, um, figure out would be, you know, anywhere from 20, 2,500 to $4,000, just depending on the amount of fish and, um, the travel costs and things like that. Um, and so I did want to tell you that. And, and then there's also a similar program I'm going to touch on here in a minute that I'm hoping that maybe we can get some response from the Department of Wildlife Resources, and that's in Ivy Creek, that's in Lynchburg. They do a youth stocking three times a year. And so that's, um, one thing that I've reached back out and I got the same answer, but there's a possibility that if this is successful and people really enjoy this, that we can push forward and maybe get some headway on some youth stocking. So, um, after doing, uh, the research, um, I still want to research the feasibility of this and, 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 and making this work, but my recommendation is we do a pilot program. Um, look at it that way. Um, we pursue private hatchery. Uh, we designate a day and this coming fall, I would say probably November, the bridge will be done October 20th. Water needs to be cool enough, you know, so I'm thinking I've talked with, you know, representatives from DWR. I've also reached out to our CPO, Conservation Police Officer for our area. He's been very helpful, very supportive of this and, and has asked me to call him with anything that I need. So, um, he's going to probably be a big resource for me, but I think that we go, we do this in the fall, engage the community interest from it, see how they, how much they enjoy it and the feasibility of doing this as, uh, as our department. Um, and then look again, as I said, I've already said, is, is, is maybe this can become a reality through the state. I don't think, just because we don't meet some of these requirements, that, that we can't be an exception to them at the same time. So, um, I think there's still research to be done there that I want to continue doing through this process, but to make this become a reality, I think the county and Parks and Recreation should do a pilot program sponsored through us.
Okay.
And another thing, lastly, I want to add on is, as you know, we have, um, we're going to be updating our master plan. We've received 95% of that funding from grants from the Virginia Department of Forestry and Danville Regional Foundation. And so we're going to have a big emphasis on outdoor recreation. Um, I know fishing is one thing, Mr. Ingram, you've brought to me before about, um, a kayak launch. And I think, Mr. Dudley, you've said something too similar about water access. And we know we don't have a lot of water access here in the county as far as county sponsored. So one thing that we're going to do with this master plan update is put an emphasis on outdoor recreation because we do hear that there's a lot of people interested in outdoor recreation, whether it be water access or fishing or hiking or trails or things like that. So, and going forward, you know, when we're working on the RFP as we speak, um, I think once we get a consultant, I think it would be good to have your feedback.
Yes, sir.
Have them come and, and get some feedback on your desires as well, um, for Parks and Recreation. So with that, um, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Price?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Um, thank you too, Justin. Good presentation. I did, uh, come to Justin a couple of years ago, had some folks in my area and really focusing on youth.
Yep.
Yes.
And I don't know if I stated that clearly, but this, what we want this to be and see this is a youth.
That's right.
Fishing day.
Yep. Cause, uh, we really need to focus and advertise youth because I know some guys that'll show up three o'clock in the morning if you stock it.
And speaking of our CPO, and you just jogged my memory.
Yes, sir.
You know, fishing license in the state of Virginia, you have to be under 16.
Right.
So, you know, we would need to, those are some things we would want to iron out is, is what our ages are going to be, but you, you would have to stock fish that are over seven inches, I think, is, is something that he said. You can only catch six. You can continue catching after six, but if you keep them, you can only keep six, but you can catch more and throw them back in. So there's some things that we'll need to definitely iron out, but I think focusing youth, as you said, and I think that was the desire before.
Absolutely.
Two years ago when we spoke and, and Mr. Dalton, I think that's, uh, Chairman Dalton, that was your desire too, is, is the youth.
Yes.
And I think that's what we need, so.
Yep. And, uh, I want to say thanks to Darryl. Um, Darryl helped me kind of spur this back up again and, um, and, and speaking of like river access and boat launches, there's, you know, the English Park right there in Alta Vista, just under the bridge on the other side is, um, Pennsylvania County, and it's a very, very nice, uh, place to possibly put one.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm glad you're looking at that too. I had some folks ask me about that. I think several years ago.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, um, outdoor recreation is something that we, we, we have an asset here in this county that we can take advantage of.
Yes.
And we just need.
Yes.
I think having a master plan and putting an emphasis on that will help us get a roadmap to, to pushing that forward here in the next five years.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it.
Any more questions?
Uh, I, I just have one, Justin. I love the idea and, uh, certainly engage in the youth. Uh, I'll thank Mr. Dudley and Mr. Dalton for spearheading this to get it back on the drawing board. But the one thing I wanted to ask you is you mentioned during your earlier presentation, the endangered species. If we do it on our own.
That is.
Do we have a concern about the impact? Look, I just want to be sure.
No, no, no. I'm 100% with you.
You know what I'm saying?
That's, that's why I said we're still working some of this out, but from what I understand, that is long-term stocking. So like you're stocking multiple times throughout the year, you know, hundreds and hundreds of fish, you know, those three times or four times that they originally stock. It's that it's, you're constantly, I mean, the amount, and I will double check on that because that's a great question. I don't want to put us at any liability, obviously, but, um, I'll check in and it may just be that it's just, it's got to be a, a bunch, an abundance of trout. So that's a great question. I'll definitely follow up on that and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Nice presentation.
Good job.
Uh, Justin, I think I brought this up to you about three years ago. Now you incorporated the fish part and that's good. Um, is there, do you recall the estimated cost of, of a ramp or kayak? What do you call that?
So I think, Dave, we looked at this, um, maybe a year ago and, um, we, we, we actually, the park in Alta Vista, I can't remember the name of it, but.
English Park.
English Park.
That was in Campbell County, I believe.
Campbell County, and that's one that we looked into because I think Mr. Monday was here at the time and he had told us about it. And, um, it was easily six figures, almost half a million dollars.
Six figures is based on our research right now is what we're finding. Um, you know, one locality, the eastern part of the state, it was around $500,000. And, uh, I believe our former interim county administrator, Clarence Monday, was able to speak to, uh, because he was involved with Alta Vista and the kayak launch at Alta, at, uh, English Park. I think he said it was along that same, uh, level of expense as the 500,000. So it's not cheap.
But definitely something that we want to put an emphasis on to see how we.
Take a look at.
Get a consultant and update our master plan and incorporate all aspects of outdoor recreation.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
Everybody good?
I'm good. Thank you, brother. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Moving to item seven. Mr. Hunt, have any business discussion?
No, sir.
All right. Moving to item eight. Can you read us into closed session?
Yes, sir. We have two closed sessions today. Um, the first one is discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiation strategy of the public body. Legal authority, Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711A3. Subject matter, property acquisition for a public purpose, purpose reviewed, discussion regarding the same. And the second closed session we have that we added at the beginning of this agenda is discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority, Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711A5. Subject matter, unannounced prospective business, industry, purpose, general economic development project update slash discussion on the same. I'll now need a motion, a second, any discussion and a vote to enter.
I'll make it motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. In a second. Second. Second by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion? If none, gentlemen, we read your vote. Pass. Thank you.[1345.91]
Mr. Chairman, I'll now certify closed session if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Huh.
We return to open session at six fifty-four PM of the Pittsavanna County Work Session. We will now certify the closed session. Be it resolved that at the Pittsavanna County Board of Supervisors Work Session on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each Board Member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any Board Member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the Act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the Board's minutes. I will now do a roll call vote. Mr. Cheshire?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman Dalton, the work session, closed session has been certified and it's appropriate now to adjourn the work session.